Yeah.
Drive carefully.
This meeting is called Water. This is the February 28th meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We're going to get right into the meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
Move approval. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If there's none, all votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Have a motion to approve the minutes. Well, we'll review and act on the minutes February 14th and February 7th. Are there any comments? No? Have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there's none, all votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Announcements. I don't have any announcements. Does anybody have any announcements this evening?
Someone can announce that the police have moved over to the new police station. As long as that's going to happen, I think that's our big announcement.
So am I. Or is it going to steal us thunder?
Go ahead.
Ready? Okay. Good evening, board members, members of the public. A couple announcements. First and foremost, as a selectman or select board member, Cassavan, just said, we're very proud that the Shrewsbury Police Department is now operating out of the new station. We can't wait to have the public come take a walk through of that, which will happen later this spring. But in the middle of last week, we were able to successfully transfer all 911 operations over from the old building into the new. A special thank you to the town of Boylston for their support in allowing us to co-dispatch from their facility during the critical switchover time. Happy to see a lighter parking lot on the employee side over here and that they're in their new home. And thank you to the taxpayers, of course, again, for providing us with this opportunity for this new facility. A couple other things from my perspective. I wanted to inform the board that we've, the Gray Star Development, which was approximately 255-plus units, which was a 40B development, which you entered into a LIP, Local Initiative Program Agreement with, and a development agreement, has formally withdrawn their application from the planning board. So that project is no longer moving forward. And there's no action that needs to be taken by the board. However, I just wanted to provide that information as they've been having some continuances from planning board meeting to planning board meeting, but they've submitted a formal request to withdraw and stop that project at this point. I will also take the opportunity to note that the board has also authorized the negotiation of a project at 104 Main Street, and that there's no word from that developer, so that project is on hold as well. Moving to the budget, we have received the initial governor's local aid proposal at $25,515.163 for the town. Just briefly, this provides 2% increase in general unrestricted aid to the town over fiscal year '23, a little less than 1% in school aid, or $30 per student. We'll see a slight decrease in tax exemptions and a slight increase in cherry sheet offsets. So in total, it provides us with $191,859 greater than fiscal year '23, which is only .85%. So this is always a challenge as we try to continue operations. State data is, of course, our second-largest revenue source, and when that only grows by less than 1%, we struggle to be able to provide revenue and continue the services that we have. So we will take these changes into account and provide you with an updated budget through the Finance Committee public hearing process. And finally, this evening, I just wanted to let everyone know that the town will be hosting two public meetings to present potential solutions and gather feedback before proposing an update to the town's parking requirements within the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. This is a part of our municipal vulnerability program, which I spoke a little bit about during the presentation last week on one, last meeting at 1 through 7 Maple Avenue. We are encouraging residents to provide their feedback and engagement on this process on how to enhance our new and existing parking lots to ensure they benefit current and future residents with an eye to environmental sustainability and improving the amount of impervious or reducing the amount of impervious surface within the community. So we ask residents to join us in finding more sustainable ways to manage parking within the community through these two public forums. And they will be held here within the community on March 13th and March 15th. The March 13th event will be at 7:00 PM, and the March 15th event will be at 1:00 PM. And additional information is available on the town website regarding locations and other ways to engage through that. So two upcoming events on the 13th and 15th regarding parking within the community.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the Gray Star application, so they had to get approval or whatever from the state. When they told us they were backing out here, what happened to the state application?
I'll have to look into that to see if they...
Because that could still be active, right?
It could be. We'll have to look into that. I will do that.
It'd just be good to know. Okay. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Nobody asked to avail themselves to the public comment period, so there will be no public comment this evening. So the next item of business is a meeting with Ryan Dixon for a proclamation presentation in his honor for his induction into the Special Olympics Hall of Fame. So I asked Ms. Cassavant if she would like to give Ryan a proclamation. Pretty famous, Ryan. We had you up here for the, for when you went to the Olympics, and now you're in the Hall of Fame, so congratulations. Do you want to come up here with Ms. Cassavant and...
Make sure you're on camera. We have to be right here in the middle of everything. But we did want to have you in to congratulate you. We're so proud of you and all of the achievements you've accomplished as a Special Olympian. I'll just take a couple minutes to read this so that people at home and people that are with us tonight can hear. It says, "The Shrewsbury Select Board congratulates Shrewsbury's Ryan Dixon, athlete of the Special Olympics USA Men's Basketball Team, who will be inducted into the Special Olympics Hall of Fame. And Ryan's been a Special Olympics athlete since he was nine years old and competed in various sports, including basketball, soccer, and bowling amongst his favorites. Additionally, Ryan has raised thousands of dollars for the Special Olympics through 5K and fuller plunges, one that you just did on a very cold day last weekend. And Ryan traveled to Abu Dhabi in 2019 to represent his team for the first time in history that Massachusetts has sent a basketball team to represent the Special Olympics USA at the World Games. And he also represented the town, the Commonwealth, and the USA. And we, the Select Board of the Town of Shrewsbury, extend our congratulations and gratitude to Ryan Dixon and the Special Olympics Organization and the Shrewsbury Special Olympics Program. In testimony thereof, we have signed our names officially and caused the seal of the Town of Shrewsbury to be affixed this 28th day of February in the year 2023. So congratulations. We are very proud of you." Thanks for being here with us.
Had to do some fun stuff.
I know. It's nice to do fun things.
Okay, the next order of business is a 7:00 PM hearing on Fryback Ave. and Cutler Street Resident Street Betterment Program Hearing. This is part of the process of the residents on the streets requesting to have their street made public. It's a process in this, tonight, if I get this correctly, Mr. Truman, is the night when the residents vote either yes, they want to move ahead, or no, they don't, correct?
Correct, yeah. So the last time the town did one was 2014, so we're all sounding remembered.
Right.
So the engineering department had a meeting with the residents last, last year to do, you know, with a preliminary design, and, you know, that was an up and down vote, similar to this one tonight, so they got the 50%. So this is the final vote where we kind of agree on the final cost for the road betterments.
Okay, so the first vote was yes, we want to do it.
Yes.
And then you worked some numbers up for the, for the residents so they would have an idea what it was going to cost.
So correct, yeah. So we did like a rough estimate for the first design, you know, produced a similar spreadsheet you have tonight, and then last year we did an actual ground survey and, you know, did a bit more of a detailed design. So we have, we have close and obviously we updated the numbers based on current...
And then the way the cost works is once we get a number afoot, then the town and the residents split 50/50?
Correct.
And it's, it's a portion on the street by the frontage that each resident has, correct?
So it's actually based on the assessed frontage. So for instance, like for most, you know, a regular street frontage is obviously 100%, but like for instance, corner lots, we only charge 100% on the main street, and then on the side street, we would do 50%. And then if it's on a, like, a couple of lots on North Quinsigammon, you know, there would have been assessed for North Quinsigammon. So there's a few different, if you look in the sheet, you'll see it has frontage assessed percentage, which most of them are 100% and then assessed frontage, and then it's based on 50% vote of the assessed frontage needs to be secured tonight.
And then if it goes through, the residents have the option of paying it over 20 years or paying it?
I believe so, yes. What happens is, you know, we get the approval tonight, you know, we'll go out to bid, and we'll do the construction, and then when we get the final...
Yeah, it's going to be down the road, but that's how it works. They don't...
Yeah, they can either pay it straight away if they like, or they can, it's another 20 years, and I believe at 3%.
We used to do these a little more regularly.
Yeah.
Used to remember, kind of rusty.
Yeah, so do you want me to just go through that? So we have a list this evening that provides the estimated assessed cost for each resident that's here. So if you need that information, please let us know, and we're happy to provide that to you for, for your review prior to the vote. So what happens is that once the town has the final cost in hand and the work has been done, then we would send a letter to the residents, and they would have 30 days to either pay their betterment in full or indicate which term that they would like to pay their betterment back under. And that can be in accordance with the general laws, up to 20 years. And the annual percentage rate on the interest that we charge is 3%. So they can pick a term shorter than 20 years, but we like to keep it within a few different parameters through the assessor's office, just so we have some consistency when we manage a project like this. So I will just add, since I have the mic at this time, that there's one nuance on this project is that the town of Shrewsbury is also in a butter to this project, as we own land. It's identified as 140 North Quinsigammon Avenue, which is in a butter to this project. So the select board would need to vote this evening to control the cost or cover the cost of our own apportionment of the town. And that amount this evening, for your consideration, is $19,411. So that, again, is just an estimate at this time. And so we would cover that portion because we have frontage, and then we'll, of course, cover 50% of the remaining costs as well, which is our policy and how we handle these. So I think that matter should be handled first, and then Mr. Truman and Mr. Apollo can manage the, the vote or questions of residents through the public hearing process.
Should we open it up to questions before...
We can do that, sure.
Anybody have any comments or questions about this before we move to, to a vote? No? Okay. So why don't we get the town's portion out of the way? So, and the other, the other way this works, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but the vote is based on the majority of the frontage that votes in the affirmative, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we need 50% or more of the assessed frontage.
Right, right. So it, there actually could be more, more residents could vote no, but, but the minority could have more frontage, and it still could pass.
Correct. So the frontages vary from, you know, I think the largest is 200 feet, the smallest is 75. So, yeah.
It's kind of like the electoral college.
As a bigger voting block.
Doesn't make sense.
When, when I asked Mr. Truman, he said to me, which made it click in my mind, if you have 75 feet of frontage, you have 75 votes, basically.
Right.
So that's kind of what made me understand this process a little bit better.
Just so everybody understands. Okay, so we are, we are in a butter. Our, our portion of the cost would be $19,411. So any discussion, members of the board?
This isn't the kind of public hearing that we need to vote to close first.
We need, we need to vote whether or not we want to vote yes or no.
Okay.
To, to pay our portion of the, of the betterment.
So my question is, this is a hearing. Do I need to vote to close the hearing first, and then we discuss this?
I don't think so.
Or is this a different kind of hearing where we...
Would you receive any public comment further?
In our hearing?
Yeah.
Vote. No. It's just us.
Yeah.
Okay, so move to close the public hearing.
Oh, wait, then I can do that. I want to make, all right, we're going to hold this hearing. We're going to hold our vote then, just to make sure, because I think somebody had a question. All right, so we'll, we'll just hold that. Did somebody have a question? Okay, we're going to close the hearing, then we're going to go right, we're going to do our vote, and then we'll do the, the street vote, okay? So just want to be clear. Okay, all right.
Okay.
And motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further comment? If there's none, all votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, so voted. Okay. Now it is the pleasure of the board.
I move that we approve our portion of the cost for the betterment of Fryback Avenue and Cutler Street, which is $19,411.
Second.
Second. We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there's none, all votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Now, yes, for a vote of everyone?
Yeah, and we need to coordinate addresses and...
Yeah, right. It gets a little complicated, because unfortunately, the way the spreadsheet's done, it's done by parcel ID as opposed to...
Okay, do you want to...
So what I did, when I did last one, I just read out each address, to be honest.
Yeah, okay.
And if they're not present, then...
Okay.
Okay, the first one I have is 1014 Fryback Wheel T Trust. Next one is 5 Fryback Ave. Not present, okay. Next one would be 33 Fryback Ave.
Yes.
Okay, we can technically stop there. We've already reached the 50% with the proxy votes we have, but we'll carry on.
Are those just for the proxy votes?
Yeah, so we got nine proxy votes ahead of the meeting.
Okay.
If I put those into the spreadsheet, we've already hit the 50%, but I mean, I'd be carry on, so we got a fore recall. 7 Fryback?
Yes.
Andy, would you mind just pausing and reading the, the proxy votes that you've received with the addresses?
Want to read them out?
Yep.
Okay, so we got one from 15 Fryback in favor of. We've got another one from 6 Cutler Ave, Cutler Street, sorry, in favor. 6 Fryback Ave in favor. 16 Fryback Ave was in favor. 25 Fryback was in favor. 21 Fryback was in favor. And the last one was 11 Fryback was in favor. So all nine were in favor. So we have 3 Fryback. Absent, okay. 25 Phillips Ave. Absent. 19 Fryback Ave?
Yes.
Yeah.
32 Fryback Ave. 7 Cutler Street?
Yes.
36 Fryback Ave?
Yes.
112 North Quinsigammon Ave. And finally, 19 Phillips Ave. Is that a yes? Okay. So we have a total of 115, 1,574 feet in favor of. The required was 1,000 feet to pass, so it does pass.
Those were all yeses?
Yeah.
Just confirmed. All of those were yes votes?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have no, no vote, so there's an absence.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, what'd you say? It did pass or it didn't?
It did pass, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then the, we, we need to vote, so... Maybe you didn't tell us. Did you record our vote?
Yeah.
Hmm?
Did you record our vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So what is the next step?
Well, the next step is obviously we'll, we'll fund it, and we'll put it on the town warrant for a street acceptance.
We don't, our board doesn't need to do anything else tonight?
No, it'll come back to you as like a regular street acceptance.
Right.
We'll, we'll get the plans drawn up.
And we'll vote to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, we'll have to get it on the warrant.
And then it'll go to town meeting?
Correct, for acceptance.
And then town meeting has to vote on it?
Correct, and then after that, we can...
And if town meeting votes on it, then it'll move forward.
Then we will fund it and put it out to bid.
Okay, so presumably the next big thing will be in May at the town meeting. And we'll see how the town meeting votes, okay? The process. Okay.
Also, just to inform the residents who may be interested, the Finance Committee will be holding public hearings near the end of April to review each and every warrant article. And at such a time, you'd have the opportunity to come in and speak and for, in favor, assuming since everyone voted yes, during that process as well, if you're interested. So that's another opportunity. And I would just encourage you to look at the town website, as we'll be posting public hearings on the annual town meeting warrant. And that would give you the opportunity to come in and talk in favor, or however you wish to talk, about this project.
In the town meeting, whether you're a town meeting member or not, you still can speak on this. You, if you're not a town meeting member, just let the moderator know you're going to be there, so, so he knows. So when you raise your hand, he'll, he'll know that you want to speak. But you can speak at town meeting. If you're not a town meeting member, you just can't vote. But you can still let people know how you feel about it. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, written comment also accepted for public hearings on the warrant and Finance Committee, correct?
That is correct. Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. We made it through?
Well, it's the same. Now we know.
Okay. Next order of business is a, yep, a public hearing with, with Selco regarding our cable television franchise agreement renewal. Just for Roy, the general manager, is here to go over it. Right, that is the next thing, right? That is the next thing. I didn't miss one, right? I'll make sure. Good evening. Okay, so we got a month to get this done, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so where are we?
Exactly a month, that's true. March 28th is...
Where, where are we with this?
So, well...
This is a, this is a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. Did we have any loose ends to tie up? Did any loose ends, Mr. McCarry? We still do?
Loose ends to tie up. There are some changes that needed to be made.
Okay. Is, 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 we're going to go over those? Okay.
Yes, so thanks, thanks for having me back again. I threw together some slides that are largely just a review of what we discussed last month, with just answering a couple of the adjustments. And I would classify them as relatively minor adjustments based on that conversation. And so I did opt to repeat some of the information, just wasn't sure, depending on the viewers, if they have not seen the prior presentation. So I can go through this relatively quickly and happy to answer any other questions that might come up along the way. So here we are with the public hearing, which is one of the several steps on the pathway to formally adopting the franchise. So just as a quick review of January's presentation, which was the first unveiling of the proposal, not to start off on a negative note, but I think this is an important perspective for the business model that we're in now. We added some of the marketing logos that you might see out there, but we're in a competitive market. So you can see, again, to reiterate, we've lost roughly half of our subscribers from the last franchise negotiation. And these are just a few of the competitors off to the side that, you know, folks aren't cutting TV and not watching TV, they're going to these other platforms. So what to expect in the future? Again, same as we discussed last round, broadband is really the basis for all of our telecommunications services, and as a tangent, a large part of our electric service as well, but that's a conversation for perhaps a different meeting. So we have our Fiber to the Home project well underway, and we anticipate the entire town to be completed by 2024. Some of the other things that we're looking to do is obviously make sure we keep our business model nimble. And a couple of near-term efforts to do so are new channel lineups that, to the maximum extent possible, leverage our contractual flexibility to create tailored packages that aren't necessarily, you know, if you want one particular channel, you need all the channels. So we're trying to pursue those options to be competitive with these other streaming providers. We talked about a little bit, we launched Selco Stream, so we do have our own streaming platform now as well, as well as pursuing other new revenue sources to help bolster the business. Some of the objectives that we're looking to accomplish with this franchise proposal is keep it focused on the TV service alone. But I did want to just reiterate, I think some of the important points that I also took away and share, the sentiment is, is helping, you know, one of the other major stakeholders in this is Shrewsbury Media Connection, SMC. And so that's primarily funded by subscriber revenue. And so they're, they face a challenging business model as well, with folks shifting to, to outside streaming services. So part of this proposal objective is to help support them in navigating what that looks like in the future. So that's a big, big objective as part of this. And then the, the third bullet there, just to, to reiterate, and I'll, I'll just quickly review the financials on the subsequent slide, is to also shift our general fund support from those calculations that are based on subscribers. This proposal shifts that to asset-based pilot, an asset-based pilot mechanism. So the more we can remove from being dependent on subscriber counts, the better. So this proposal also introduces that mechanism to do that, as well as a five-year automatic renewable, renewal term to keep the, the document nimble and potentially adapt to any changes we see in the next five years instead of a decade. So just again, a quick review of the financials. See here, the top category is how the financial arrangement is currently structured. And then the, the change I made to reflect some of the conversations we've had, as well as fiscal projection one, since the town's budgets are being discussed, I did update the Shrewsbury Electric Pilot. So you can see here, we're introducing a cable pilot, as well as increasing the electric pilot with the ultimate goal. And if you don't mind, I'll just go to the next slide, which I think is a little more concise. The ultimate goal to help these total budget impacts on a cash basis. So you can see with the support of the cable pilot and the electric pilot, we can keep the Town of Shrewsbury contribution to level funded, whereas before we had, we were showing that $131,000 difference. But this is, this is better reflective of that. SMC sees a boost. Again, there's a big notation there, and we're just wrapping up some of our preliminary numbers, but that is not... But that is not going to be five hundred and fourteen thousand, since it's based on five percent of gross video revenue. So again, as that subscriber count goes down, just as a placeholder for this presentation, we use 2021 numbers. Twenty-two, twenty-two numbers are lower, that is probably going to be more in the order of four hundred and fifty thousand something, something along. Which, again, keeps them somewhat level funded from where they are today, rather than substantial losses. And then we see, again, trying to help bolster the Shrewsbury cable business. We can see here with the, these proposals, we get, gain an additional four hundred and twenty-eight thousand to that business, where we can leverage that as part of our rate-making efforts. And then electric, obviously, with some of the renewed calculations based on plant value, that takes a bunch of that burden. But I will make the quick notation that that is on par, the calculation metric for that number is on par with how municipal light plants do that around the state. So that's not an outlier by any stretch. Uh, and then just to address the questions that came up from last month, six point four A. I think that was where there was some confusion, and I will admit, I believe that was an error on my part, that we didn't have a red line that was supposed to be in there. So we introduced, just for clarification, a studio for use by ASIC, access designee, just a simple language clarification there. And then we removed all the remaining text in A, which referred to SMC equipment, that's SMC, it's not Selco's, so removes that confusion. And then just two words, since we're in the section six point five A, it's reasonable. And then I noticed in seven point one, we had license fee, it was just confusing, so we added statutory to match. Other than that, I think relatively minor. And then the last slide, just for quick summary for those that might be viewing this for the first time. These are the key takeaways I was hoping folks would keep in mind as they look at this. The way people consume news and entertainment is changing rapidly, and so that necessitates us to, you know, our, our key, key metrics are customer service and service to the community. So we, we need to make sure we're adapting along with it. The competitive environment we talked about a few minutes ago, the challenges that Selco faces. And I had to add in bullet point four, just for conversation's sake, but as folks switch to Hulu, Netflix, Prime, you know, any of those others, those folks are part of the franchise profit. So when you subscribe to those services, that revenue goes to those shareholders, not to the Shrewsbury community. So that's just something that I think that's noteworthy during this transition. And then the importance of fiber, backbone of all services, so I'm happy to answer any questions, I know I went through kinda fast, but.
Just a quick comment, when you had the screen showed us your competitors?
Yes, sir.
Almost none of them existed ten years ago. It was interesting to see.
Different times.
Did anybody have any questions, Mr. Musica, do you have anything you wanna?
I don't, I, um, general manager Roy and I have talked between meetings. I agree with the changes that were made, I think they addressed the comments that were brought up at the last meeting. And appreciate the ability to pivot and maintain a level funding stream for the, for the town, it's really important to the budget. As I already commented on state aid and things like that, little or no revenue growth is really hard to deal with, so appreciate the partnership. And, oh, I think that's it.
So we're getting there.
Getting there.
Okay. So, next step, well, I know we gotta finish the public hearing, but assuming we wrap up this public hearing and we can wrap everything up, should we be having this on the next agenda?
Yeah, you could certainly, we'll have to vote it on the twenty-eighth and submit it to the state. Or, excuse me, today is the twenty-eighth, uh, the fourteenth.
Okay.
March fourteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
So public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this matter? Any members of the board have any issues? Still, it's a lot quicker than the last one, right, Bob?
Oh, he edited.
Okay. Sonya?
Now the question, and the, with SMC was addressed, just a quick question, so will the license stay in place effectively? It's not a lease that was with SMC, is that just gonna status quo?
Status quo.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? If there being none, all those in favor, stick your five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, voted, thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next order of business is a meeting with Pulte Homes of New England regarding proposed development of thirty-three to sixty-nine Green Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, I have copies of the presentation, just.
Oh, great, thank you, very helpful. Thank you very much, great.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Yeah, I'll give one today.
I know, I saw you in the document.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to introduce yourself, introduce yourself to the audience, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, for the record, my name is Mark Mastriani, I'm here with Essex Petrie. We are representatives of Pulte Homes of New England, who's the applicant for the residential development that we will be presenting, presenting to you tonight. And also with us tonight is our team member, Matt Leidner, he's with Civil Design Group, and he will be helping us with all of the permitting and the general engineering and civil engineering associated with our, with our project as, as hopefully it moves forward here. Very excited to be here, glad the snow didn't cancel the meeting, I was nervous yesterday. This is, this is great. So I'm just gonna give an introduction on our company, and then I'll turn the, the floor over to Essex pretty quickly, and he can give a high-level overview of our, of our proposal for, for Emerald Run, which is what we're calling our new proposed homeownership residential community located at thirty-three to sixty-nine Green Street. All right, off of Route twenty, and we'll show you where that is moving forward. So I, I was going to briefly touch on Pulte Homes and who we are, but I did, I did take note of, of some of your notes that you mentioned earlier, that the Gray Star project has officially withdrawn, I had heard that rumor. And, and then I did not know about the one oh four Main Street project, that, that one is, is news to me. So I think I'm actually gonna just spend thirty more seconds actually focusing on who we are and Pulte Homes of New England, 'cause I think it's really important to try to share, you know, our experience and our capabilities to, to work with towns and to complete projects and to move them forward, we've been, we've been doing that for a long time. So, we have up in the slide, so we are, we're Pulte Homes of New England, that's, that's who Essex and I work for. It, it's a local division of the Pulte Group. So the Pulte Group is a publicly traded home builder, very large, I think we're number three, depending on what, what scale you look at and what you measure. We're based out of Atlanta, it's a publicly home, uh, home builder. You can find all the information on PHM is the ticket, and that has a big website. Twenty-six divisions throughout the country, and again, so we are the Pulte Homes of New England division. So we're one of the divisions, and we operate right here in Westboro, right down the street on Flanders Road. We've been there in, in that office for over twenty years, and before that, we were in Southboro. So we've been around a long time. We are completely self-funded, we don't rely on any financing, the, the company is very stable financially. And I, and that's, that's really important, especially in times like now, or what we're heading into potentially. You know, we, we, we've been around for a long time, we've built through good cycles, we've also continued building successfully through the various downturns that, that we've had in, in the past, you know, decades. So, Pulte Homes of New England, we entered the New England market approximately thirty years ago. We've been building primarily in eastern Massachusetts, that, at that time, we also have some projects in Connecticut, we had a few in New Hampshire. We had a few in Rhode Island, but primarily all in eastern Mass and, and many, many projects around, you know, this area and, and east of four ninety-five. We're up to about eight thousand homes now, over, over that, that time period. And, and recently, we've been consistently doing, building, selling about four hundred homes a year out of our, out of our division, which is a, a pretty big market share for, for Massachusetts. It's the largest market share in Massachusetts. Okay, and then the, the next slide, you know, this is just our active, a list of active communities now. So you, you can see on there where Shrewsbury is, and, and just in the immediate vicinity, we have several residential communities near us. We have two in Grafton, we have a condominium community in Grafton, and we also have a family home community in Grafton that, that recent, we've recently just started both of them under construction. We have a large condominium community in, in Westboro called Del Webb, that's seven hundred homes there. We, we began that approximately three years ago, and, you know, we're, we're, you know, moving right, right along there. That's right down the street on Lyman Street in Westboro. And then, the other project close by is in Upton, a, a townhome project that we call Upton Ridge, that's a hundred and thirty-nine townhomes there. And then we have, you know, several other, you know, large residential for-sale condominiums developments, you know, throughout eastern Mass, you know, in Walpole and North Reading and over Sudbury, all active today. And, and I, I think we just, you know, wanted to show you this list because, you, you know, this is a small, this is a small area here, and, and people move around a lot and, and people talk, and so, you know, we have a reputation. I think you could call any of your counterparts in any of these other communities, cities and towns, and, and ask about Pulte Homes of New England and, and how we've performed and who we are and, you know, what we're about. And, and I, and I'm, I'm pretty proud of the reputation that we've, we've built. And, so, you know, I just, you know, throw that out there, you know, with our, you know, trying to kinda showcase our, our capabilities here for this, for this project. We're really excited about it, we're really excited to be here and, and hopefully get started. It is a forty B, I'm almost, I'm almost to you. I'm sorry.
Can't wait.
It is a forty B, and so not on this list is some past experience. So, in two thousand four to two thousand seven, we, we did a forty B called Hilltop Farms. And, and right here in Grafton, that was two hundred and fifty-six townhomes. And then there's another one more recently called, we called South Natick Hills, that's a Natick. That, we can, completed that in two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, and that was two hundred and sixty-eight condominium units. So I just wanted to share that forty B experience with you all as well. With that, I just wanted to thank you again for your time, and, and turn the floor over to us.
All right, thank you, Mark, thank you, members of the select board. So as Mark said, we work in the land planning and permitting department at Pulte Homes, uh, New England, here in Westboro. I just wanted to quickly talk a little bit about our team members that are gonna be part of this project as well, that you'll get familiar with as we move forward the project. You know, Mark introduced Matt and his, his team at Civil Design Group, they do site design, civil, general engineering. Really, Matt is our kind of go-to problem solver, so chances are you will be seeing a lot of Matt throughout the life of this project. VHB will be handling our MIPA environmental permitting as, as needed. MDM, transportation consultants, who I'm sure that you are familiar with, they do a lot of work here in Shrewsbury. They actually have a lot of experience with some of the other projects that were mentioned already, but others directly in the area. And it's actually worked out well for us, because they had access to some of the traffic counts and data that was collected as part of those projects right at Route twenty. Additionally, we worked through them and communicated with Mast dot. They also had some recent data that was collected as part of their Route twenty corridor master plan. So they were able to kind of get a jumpstart on some of the preliminary traffic impact analysis work. SWCA and Mickey Marcus will be doing all of our natural resource analysis and impact assessment. We've actually had them out on site and walked the site with them a few times and done some preliminary delineation and identification last, last fall into early winter. And then finally, Coughlin Environmental Services, specialize in wastewater, stormwater and utility infrastructure engineering. They've been working with Dan and Jeff and the team of DPW to identify the existing services in the area. And, you know, we, we had hydro flow tests last fall, so we've, we've started to dig our, you know, dig into the details out on site as it regards to utilities. All right, next slide. So this is the project site, it is located in the southeastern corner of Shrewsbury, and adjacent to the Westboro and Grafton town lines. It's on the eastbound side of Route twenty, sandwiched between South Street and Green Street. There is an unsignaled intersection at South Street and Route twenty, and there is a signalized intersection at, at Green Street and Route twenty. As Mark mentioned, you, we are, we're under agreement to purchase the property, and really, it is our intent to file a LIP application for a friendly forty B with the town of Shrewsbury for this project. And next slide. So we can dive into some of the act, details of the actual project. Yellow boundary is the project boundary, it's approximately forty acres. You can make out, I think on the screen, the, the blue hatching there, that is GIS or desktop-based wetland boundaries. We've, we've gone on site and done some verification, and as per usual with GIS-based wetland boundaries, there's some, it varies in certain areas, but we're fairly confident in, in that data, that it's, it's fairly accurate enough. There is a light gray dashed line on there, you can see there's, there's a couple different, those are the, yeah, thank you, Taylor. Those, that, those are the zoning boundaries, the parcel is bisected, trisected, I guess, by three different zones. Along Route twenty, it's the industrial zone, also the Route twenty overlay district. Adjacent to South Street, it's, it's rural A, and then the rest of the property, it's a rural B zone. And, you know, as a result of that mix of different zones across this one parcel, there really are no viable options to develop the parcel under the existing zoning. As we have this forty B proposal, you know, as a result, includes three hundred residential units. It's, the units are spread across six buildings, all four-story, fifty-unit condo buildings, kind of separated in two different little development areas on the site. Privately owned and maintained condominium community, all the units will be homeownership and not rental. Twenty-five percent or seventy-five total units will be affordable units in compliance with, with DHCD. All vehicular access for the, for the project will be off of Green Street. And, as you can see, there's some challenges, you know, from a natural resource perspective. But additionally, each building does have underground parking, as well as the associated surface lots that are adjacent to each building. And the total on those, it's about five hundred and forty total spaces for the project, both, again, underground and surface. It, it equals out to about one point eight spaces per unit. Just quickly to touch, well, you can stick on that, that one, please, Taylor, real quick, thank you. Again, as noted, the, the wetland boundaries, that's based on the GIS. We've gone out there and done some preliminary delineation, we're gonna work with Andy and his team to, out there hopefully late, later this spring to do an official wetland delineation, but based on what we've seen out there, we're confident that the program that we're showing here won't need to be adjusted based on what we find. We, we fully expect that the boundaries will shift slightly, one way or the other, but we don't expect anything too significant from that perspective. Additionally, just quickly on this slide, as I noted, we do have MDM on staff and they've already started doing some preliminary traffic analysis. And based on what they've looked at to date, they do not estimate that this project would be an extreme traffic generator on Green Street. And they also did note that the existing signalized intersection at twenty and Green Street is not near capacity based on today's conditions. And additionally, during that analysis, we did not account for any improvements associated with the Mast dot future corridor improvement plan, which does plan for modifications to the Route twenty corridor in that area as well as, as well as that intersection. But we felt it was more conservative to assume based on today's configuration and that's what we will use moving forward through that initial analysis. All right, next slide. Thank you. So this is kind of bleeding out, but this is just a real quick take at the water and sewer conceptual design. Again, based on initial coordination with, with the town, we're looking at a forced main sewer that would be connecting our two project areas and then eventually connecting into the existing sewer line on Route twenty. Ideally, we would be minimizing any travel down the Green Street right-of-way, but we'd be balancing between avoiding wetland impacts and minimizing traveling down Green Street right-of-way for that. And then from a water perspective, we would be looking at replacing the existing water main along Green Street from our project boundaries down to the existing main that's currently in Route twenty. I think that's, that's good for this one. Next slide. Thank you. And so this is just a conceptual rendering that we prepared for Emerald Run. We have had a lot of success with similar styles in the area. This is, it's been well received by the homeowners. And, you know, as Mark noted, we do have years of experience developing communities. And, you know, throughout that time, we've, we've adjusted and modernized our architecture based on trends and, you know, innovations in materials and styles. And importantly, through homeowner and homeowner feedback, we consistently have surveys to our homeowners, asking questions on kind of what works and what doesn't. And we consistently upgrade our architecture to accommodate that. We do, we strive to develop neighborhoods that people are proud to be part of. And, you know, we really emphasize working together with the municipalities with the expectation that, you know, we'd be welcomed back to, you know, in the future and beyond for additional projects down the road. So, but we're excited to work with the town of Shoesbury on this project. And at this point, we'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Okay, anybody have questions, comments? Yes.
One question. So you provided some examples of ten other local areas where you have developed and sixty percent of them are fifty-five and over. So can you help me understand why you're not proposing fifty-five and over for this development in Shoesbury?
I could do that. Let me take that. So we have a very large fifty-five and older community called Dell Web at Chautse Lake, which is about ten minutes from here. It has seven hundred units. It's being built under our Dell Web brand. It's highly amenitized. And it would, it would compete with this location. So when we looked at this location and we looked at, you know, what we could do here, we, we thought it'd be in the best interest for, to be successful here at this project to do a non-age-restricted project.
Do you have any initial indication of the three hundred units? Are they all the same in terms of number of bedrooms? Or will they vary? And do you have any indication at this time as to what that mix would be?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have built similar buildings as what we're proposing here at Emerald Run. So it's a fairly equal mix of one- and two-bedroom units. And then under the forty B program, we are required to provide ten percent three-bedroom units. So in this scenario, there would be thirty three-bedroom units and then a fairly equal mix of one- and two-bedroom modestly sized one- and two-bedroom homes. You know, we, I think each, each building, fifty units, has twenty-three one-bedrooms and then twenty-two two-bedrooms and then three, and then there would be five three-bedrooms. I was trying to, we typically don't do three-bedrooms. We solely have to do the five in each building to comply with, with the forty B requirements.
Any other question? Just question.
Yeah, so this is a fairly large parcel and because of the wetlands, you're only able to develop a very small piece of it, it seems. So I just wanted to know a little bit more about, you know, your sustainability outlook. Like what are your practices as far as trees and, you know, how much cutting do you do or would you try to leave some of the mature trees? And just to sort of understand, you know, just thinking about the environmental impact on the parcel, kind of what your thoughts are on that.
Sure, and, you know, in addition to the natural resources that are on site, there's significant topography on site. There's some decent slopes there, too. So that kind of also helped drive where we were putting our locations. And, you know, I think one of the benefits of having the garage under allows us to minimize surface parking and still provide our homeowners with a, you know, that one point eight spaces per unit, which is desirable at, you know, for a home like this. And so it allows us to minimize that surface parking to provide that. From a tree-cutting perspective, it's certainly in our interest to minimize as much as possible for, you know, our future homeowners. It's desirable to have as much existing tree and, you know, mature tree growth on site as possible. And so when we get our contractor out on site, we work through that and to understand what's going to be the most likely and reasonable as far as preserving trees that are, you know, existing in those mature trees.
Yeah, tree-cutting is a necessary evil of development, obviously. And we're all sensitive to that, especially these days. You know, Essex said it perfectly, that the garage unders really allow us to maximize open space and minimize the footprint. And, you know, and as we get into the design, there'll be a very comprehensive landscaping plan, replanting plan with, you know, hundreds of new trees that are proposed. So, you know, they're new trees, they're not like the existing trees there. But, you know, there are ways that, you know, you can design projects to be sensitive and to replace, you know, with a lot of new landscaping, you know, to replace the old landscaping.
Thank you. That's all for right now, thank you.
This would have you.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So understanding that you self-fund this as opposed to having outside, outside debt or equity. So how's the vacancy profile? Do you pre-sell some? Do you, what's typical when you open the buildings is a hundred percent sold out? Is it less than that? You don't have the pressure and you fill it in as it goes? What's the typical situation on a development like this?
So, I'll take this one. So as opposed to a rental community where they build the whole community out at once and lease it, you know, we go more in a phased and a staged approach. So, you know, there's fifty homes in a building. So basically, we would start one building and we would, well, we would be pre-selling before we start the building. But then, you know, hopefully, we'd have a lot of sales and we would be selling. And usually, by the time, it takes about a year to build one of these buildings. And usually, by the time the building is complete, most of the building is sold out or more than fifty percent is sold out. That's the goal. And then we would move to the next building so that you're, you're at all times basically building two buildings at once. So you're, you're, you have your initial building that you've completed and you're moving people into and at the same time, and you still have some homes remaining in that building. And then at the same time, you're building a new building so that when, when this one is sold out, then you're selling in this one. And then when that one's fifty percent sold out, you're starting the next building and it's an organized procession around the site. So you're not, you don't have empty buildings sitting there. There are also mortgage requirements, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, that I don't believe you can actually occupy the units until fifty percent of them are sold out. So I think that answers your question.
It does. So does the pre-buy finance a portion of it or it's just?
Say that again?
Do the pre-buys finance a portion of it or is just all existing balance?
Yeah, it's all, it's all Polte developer financed, yeah.
And then one more, if I may. So sell all three hundred. Common areas after that, who manages it after that? It's the condo association?
Yeah, that's right.
Is it per block? Is it in the aggregate? How do they typically work? So you have six buildings, right?
Yeah, so the, the design here would be one condominium association, probably called, you know, Emerald Run Condominium Association. It's created at the first closing of the first building. When that building is declared, you would create the condominium. And that basically, you would take all of the land and you condominiumize it. And then as each building is built and sold and phased into the, to the condominium, so then it becomes a privately owned and maintained condominium. And the way, the way we operate our condominiums is that Polte Homes would be the declarant trustee of the condo through the duration of the construction. And then at the end of the project, there would be an election and the board would turn over from the declarant trustee to a homeowner resident board and they would take over the board and then they would own and operate and maintain the condominium into, into the future. Just, you know, for, for the people in this room, we have, you know, nine active projects right now. I'm actually the declarant trustee on all nine of those projects. So I, throughout my role at the company is to do the, you know, acquisition permitting, design. And then also, we stay on during the course of the project to maintain permit compliance. And also, we, we act as declarant, you know, we're declarant trustee representatives on the boards for all of our condominiums, which actually, we learn a lot. We get a lot of customer feedback. And then we take that feedback and you can, you can put it back into your future projects and maybe correct things or make improvements to your future projects that you learn on each, on each project.
Thank you. Okay, so I got a couple of questions. Well, first one's a comment. We haven't had a forty B, I don't think, with homeownership in the town yet, right? I don't, I don't remember when. So this is, from our perspective, on the ten percent is different than the apartments. The, the only, the only units that count towards, to our ten percent affordable are the affordable.
Twenty-five or seventy-five total.
Right? So basically, these are like no harm, no foul because you're offsetting what you're building for the most part.
Under forty B, it's twenty-five percent affordable. So you're, if you're trying to get to ten percent on the, on the SHI, so this is still moving you a little bit ahead. It's not all one hundred, one hundred percent count like a rental.
Right.
It still is, you don't fall behind. You actually gain a little bit here as well.
A little bit, right. But you get the benefit of homeownership.
Homeownership and the taxes.
So is the assessed value of a, of a, of a project like this, after they were established? Is the apartment?
It's completely different, so.
No, I understand. I know they've, I know they're assessed differently. I know that the numbers work differently. But was it condo building?
Each individual unit owner, when they buy, they get a deed and they're all assessed, their units are all assessed individually.
So you got fifty units here. When you take all fifty units and compare it to a fifty-unit apartment, but that was an apartment building, how does, how does the value, do the values equate at all? The ownership to the apartment?
So as far as revenue to the town?
Yeah.
My guess and is that a for-sale homeownership project is, is much more financially beneficial to a town than a rental complex. And I don't know the rental model, but I've, I've heard that and I've said that in the past and I truly believe and we can get somebody to verify that. But the tax revenue on a homeownership is, to the town, is, is, is more than, you know, an assessed value of a rental community to, to, to the town is my strong assumption.
Okay.
Our company does not do rentals, just, just to throw that out there, though. We didn't choose whether to do a rental or a homeownership here. We solely do homeownership condominium.
Right, I, I knew that, but I just was curious if you know. Are there no amenities in here like there are in a rental complex?
There will be. So this is a conceptual plan that we haven't fully designed yet. But the amenity program here hasn't been, you know, shown or confirmed yet. But there would be, there would be onsite amenities for the, for the homeowners here. I just don't know what, what level of those amenities as of yet.
All right, so I get, I get, let's see how much we can work together. So this is, this is, and I know there's a lot of wetlands in here, but you know, we talked about the Green Street light and not having a light at South Street. We had a conversation about that before. And one of the things that we've been talking about and I keep dreaming about is trying to make that connection between south and green so that we could get to a signalized light because there's a lot of houses back there. Is there a possibility that we could work with you so we could find a way to get a street from south to green? Because I think on the one hand, it's a lot of apartments for us to, units, and I know they're not apartments, to absorb. But if we could find a way to get a road and make that connection in there, I think there's also a benefit. And I know that that's a lot to ask and certainly not to ask you, not necessarily for you to pay for that because I know it's expensive. But if there's a way to work together and find a way to be able to get that road through there somehow so that we can get to people on South Street to get to the light. And I think that would also help you, not, not as much for the light because you'll have access to it. But if you go down the other way and go down South Street, you get a quicker access to the train station.
Westboro train station.
Westboro train station, yeah. If you don't want to go, if you don't want to go to Grafton.
Right, yeah, because you've got them both in a couple miles.
Some people'd rather go to Westboro. But anyways, you don't need to, you don't need, I need equipment now, but I think if we could look at it, I think the state would be interested because that's a, that's a tough section of Route twenty.
We, it's definitely something that, that we will absolutely look at. And, you know, as I mentioned, we've been out on site with our, with SWCA and our natural resource, you know, consultant. That would be one of our, you know, primary concerns out there doing that. And luckily, our engineer is here. And so, you know, that would be the next step. But it's certainly something that we look forward to working with the town and understanding kind of the priorities of that connection as far as just thinking, you know, along that, there's a lot of frontage along South Street. And kind of from the town's perspective, if there's a preference on one end or the other, I know that there's an academy down the, I apologize, I don't know, Hundred.
Alhamra.
Yeah, down the, towards Route twenty that has a pretty significant driveway connection there. So just taking certain elements like that into account and understanding what the town's priorities would be.
I think probably up the other end, but we'll leave that to the engineers.
We can look at, look into it for.
Yeah, if we could, if we could look at it because, I mean, it is a problem. Route, the state's looking at Route twenty, they've got a plan, but a signalized intersection might help us get rid of one of those rotaries that they're talking about. Roundabout, what? You don't think so?
I just listened, uh, texting, uh, Nick, sorry.
Um, anyways, if, if we could look at it, um, because people, people who live down in there complain about that all the time. So, I mean, if, if, if we could make it work, it'd be great.
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned earlier, we've actually talked to Mastod about that. We got some of their initial, well, about the data collection. So we've got some of the initial counts, so we'll talk to M D M about kind of running some numbers quickly on that to see what that would look like and what that might mean, um, for, for those, uh, those connections.
Now's the time to look, so, um, if we could do that. I think my colleagues asked some of those other questions, so, um, for now, I'm good. So, as far as where we are tonight, um, you're interested in, in doing a lip?
We, we very much would be, yeah.
I think generally, if we're gonna have a project like this, I think generally, we would prefer a lip and go through this in a more friendly way than fight our way through and it's not good for anybody. So I guess, would the board be in, do you have anything like to say, Mr. Msakavir?
No, I mean, I think we can handle that all during conversations outside of this meeting.
Right.
One, one question I will work with them on is just zoning and how does the existing zoning impact your project? And, you know, if there's something that we could work on with zoning to, you know, you have frontage on Route twenty. If there's opportunities for development there, I know there's some environmental impacts, but, you know.
Yeah, the, the, the makeup of the zoning as far as the, kind of the, you know, there's three different zones going through there makes it, makes it challenging. Um, so from, as far as the existing zoning itself, uh, it would be challenging to, to, um, to conceive a project based on what's out there right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, if there were, um, you know, other opportunities or something to discuss, you know, as far as zoning change or something, looking at something different. Um, it's certainly something that we would be, we'd have a conversation about, sure.
Of course, just as the board knows, and we dealt with a little bit earlier this year, we have the MBTA zoning matter to deal, or to handle and, and work through. So, you know.
Yeah, we would be happy to, to talk with you further about that, and if that's something that makes sense for the town.
Okay.
As far as doing the forty B though, the zoning doesn't really affect them, right?
Would help us.
It would help us, but the forty B doesn't affect them.
Oh, it does not impact.
Yeah, the, the only reason we're doing the forty B is because the zoning that, as I mentioned, on site, isn't conducive for a, for a project here of, of what we're proposing. You know, if there was an opportunity for zoning to be put on the site, that like, like to help with the MBTA requirements. Um, if, if this site was, uh, in the plans and could be utilized towards meeting those goals, we certainly very much would be willing and, and would, would entertain those discussions, absolutely.
So.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, um, if it wasn't a forty B, would that then change the unit count? Like the unit, like the configuration of your units?
It would, it likely would, yes. It would be very dependent on what the future scenario looks like as far as, you know, the zoning category or, or, you know, density requirements of what, whatever future zone would be, um, you know, created there or, or an overlay or whatnot. So likely, it would change or could change in some capacity.
But then, can I ask a follow-up? But then the affordable component, like the requirement for affordable would also change?
It could. Uh, you wouldn't be, they wouldn't be compelled under forty B, but we could work with them through a development agreement or something like that to meet our desires.
Right.
Well, even.
And there are some affordable, affordability stipulations associated with the MBTA zoning and all. I think it maxes, it maxes it, yeah.
Right, I mean, it's, it's a competing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sort of like balancing, right? Because we know there's an extreme need for housing, of a diversity of housing and affordable housing. But then also thinking through the impact of thirty-three bedroom units and wanting to, you know, minimize that if possible.
Maybe if I, so, I know you wouldn't be hitting the market for at least a couple of months. I'm just kidding. So it, like, so this is something in my mind that I think could provide an opportunity for Shrewsbury because of the cost of single-family homes within the community. So I think you may be hitting a price point that doesn't exist within the community for homeownership. So do you have any idea of what the ranges could be? Like, uh, you know, if you think about a one-bedroom, what number comes to mind? If you think about a three-bedroom, what number?
So I'm, I'm gonna give you an answer that sounds like I'm avoiding your question. But I promise, it's, it's half doing that. No, seriously, I, we get that asked all the time. So, so, so the first real answer to that is, you know, if, in, in a, in a project of this scale, it's likely that we will not finish permitting anytime before, uh, sometime late in twenty twenty-four, right? So, you know, let's plan a, a year and a half, you know, you know, sometime hopefully in twenty-four, we get our permits. So that means they would not be hitting the market into twenty twenty-five. And we all know that the, the housing market right now is in flux, so it's changing. And by twenty twenty-five, you know, we don't, nobody can predict where the, where the market is. But, you know, it, it is what it is. But with that all said, what we think is a really unique and beneficial offering that we're proposing here and, and what, because we have built this product locally and very well received. And because of the unique product, we have, uh, one bed, one-bedroom units that are a thousand square feet. And up to, uh, we usually only stop at two bedrooms, but, so then we have up to two-bedroom units that are fifteen hundred square feet. And depending upon what floor they're on, you know, what view they may have from either the, you know, from the fourth floor versus the first floor. Um, you know, and what the homeowner chooses to specify and finish the home with. You know, we could, we could very easily range units within, you know, that, that span hundreds of thousands of dollars. So some of the units, people, homeowners could get into and, you know, just say today's dollars, like, you know, in the three hundred thousands. And then other units, uh, bigger units on higher floors with better finishes, um, could, you know, be upwards of fives and sixes very, very easily. So, I, and that's really, I think that's really unique and really important is that, you know, there's, there's, there's a product here for many different people and, and their needs and, and their, you know, their ability to purchase homes. So I think that is a different price point that, that is being offered here.
I'm kind of chuckling a little bit when you said how big those units were, because.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I was chuckling a little bit because when you were talking about the size that those units would be, because the ranches they were building in the fifties, fifteen hundred square foot house had three bedrooms and probably four kids in it. And it's fifteen hundred square feet used to be a decent sized house for back then. It's funny.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
So eleven, eleven hundred square feet, there's ranches in town that have, have big.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, they're nice units.
Anyways.
They're a nice unit.
So, um, what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want the manager to engage in discussions and explore the possibility of a lip and a development agreement? Have him come back and see where, what we come up with?
I'm fine with that.
I think that it would be, um, smart for the manager to engage in those discussions and report back on his findings and recommendations.
Okay, yes?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Do we need a motion for that? I'm happy to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't need a vote.
We, you don't need a vote.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Great. So next steps, Kevin will.
Work with the manager.
And we'll, okay, great.
Sounds good.
We'll set something up.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you all.
For coming in.
Coming in.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Okay. Okay, what's next? Okay, next our business is to review and act to set the date, time, and location of the annual town meeting, which will be on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's kind of funny, okay, it's gonna be on May fifteen. It's gonna be seven P M. at Oak Middle School, unless we decide to change it. So.
Move approval.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then we, we, at some point, we'll have a tenant to pay for the second night. And we'll have reserved for the second night, we'll have a date.
Plan will be, yeah, for Tuesday night.
Right.
If we're gonna.
We're not gonna set that now.
No.
Right.
We would do that, that'd be the discussion with the moderator at the meeting.
Yep, okay. Okay, next our business is to review and act on the use of the Immacast precinct tabulators at the annual town election on May second, twenty twenty-three, and thereafter at all primaries and elections held in the town of Shrewsbury. And discontinue the use of the AccuVote optical scan tabulators. Um, the funding for the new, um, tabulators was, um, approved at the, um, town meeting last year in this, in the FY twenty-three budget. Um, the Immacast precinct tabulator is one of, um, I think it was two that were approved by the state, uh, certified by the state. And, um, they're ready to go, so.
I'll just, I can just add, um, we were fortunate that Representative Kane and Senator Moore were able to secure an earmark for us in the FY twenty-three budget process to cover the cost of this. So we don't even have to spend local dollars to get these new voting machines, so thank them for their work.
I forgot about that.
That's great.
Okay, so, any discussion? Okay, um, there was a suggested motion.
Yep.
Um, if somebody would like to make it.
Sure. I move that, um, we authorize the use of the Immacast precinct tabulators at the annual town election on May second, twenty twenty-three, and thereafter, at all primaries and elections held in the town of Shrewsbury, and discontinue use of the AccuVote optional scan tabulators.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, is there any further discussion? If there's not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, still voted. Item twelve is to review and act on a proposed complete street, complete streets application for North Quinzigman Avenue. Mr. Msakavir, do you want to go over that?
Sure, so, um, we have, uh, Mr. Howland and Mr. Truman here this evening, uh, certainly can help as well. But this is moving us in, uh, into the action phase of the Complete Streets project, which has been ongoing in town for several years. And this proposal, which we're happy to share on the screen, um, uh, creates a com- complete streets environment along North Quinzigman Avenue from, uh, Route nine nearly the whole way through Main Street. So, Jeff or Andy wants to talk a little bit further.
Yeah, I can, I can just pull it up.
Do you want me to?
Yeah. Put it up on the screen.
I'm gonna zoom, don't worry.
Yeah, well, it looks like it's a.
So, so the Complete Streets Committee, which consists of Chris McGoldrick, Andy, myself, um, J- um.
Patty.
Patty, Chan, building inspector, um, Jay Thomas as a planning board representative, and I can't remember who else is on the committee. Has been working over the last several years, actually, we started probably before COVID. And due to COVID, we sort of disbanded for a little bit and it came back and started looking at prioritizing potential, uh, locations where we can meet the Complete Streets, uh, which is a, a state program. And we prioritized the list, came up with probably twenty or thirty locations which we potentially could use or create a Complete Streets, which is a combination of both, of all modes of transportation. We looked first at the easiest that we could, uh, do to create a Complete Street, which is sidewalks, uh, for pedestrian and also bike lanes and obviously vehicular traffic. Uh, North Quinzigman Avenue is the easiest one for us to do, as it does not require us to really change the existing curb line as the existing travel lanes are very wide. So we could easily just re-stripe the travel lane to, to get the five-foot bike lanes on both sides and have an adequate travel lane, I believe, of eleven feet. And what we're asking now is to go forward with an application to provide sidewalk from, that would interconnect from Main Street all the way down to Route nine. We have several locations where we already have sidewalks, some locations on both sides closer to Route nine. Then it kind of comes up, comes to the, uh, uh, west side. Then it cut, then it ends for a while, up near the post office. Then we have it on the, on the, uh, east side as we get underneath the two ninety bridge. And then it continues all the way to Main Street. So what we're doing, looking to do is submit a grant application to connect the sidewalk near the Route two ninety over a pass down to, uh, just beyond the Rowing Center, correct?
Yeah, you had terrace up to the Rowing Center.
Oh, yeah, uh, correct.
Okay, so make believe I didn't follow that.
Perfect. So we're trying to connect a, have a pedestrian sidewalk that will basically take you from North Quinzig- I mean, on North Quinzig from Main Street all the way to Route nine.
On, on the west side of the road or the east side?
What we're proposing now will be on the east side.
Yeah.
And then we'll provide a crossing at, um.
The Rowing Center, just, just north of the Rowing Center. So what you see on the red here is basically filling.
So it's gonna go all the way down the east side?
Yeah, so you'll be able to walk all the way from Route nine all the way up to Main Street, once it's complete.
How long is that? How long is the work?
It's about thirty-five hundred feet.
Yeah? There's plenty of room over there to do it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, as I say, it's a pretty easy low-hanging fruit one to pick off, because it's just really a sidewalk and a little bit of grading and a couple crosswalks, so, you know, we.
Yeah, so we chose this because it was, is probably the, one of the easiest ones we have. We have the real estate, we have the right of way. Uh, there's very little other improvements are necessary other than to put in a sidewalk.
Is there a sidewalk on West Main Street all the way down to North Quinzig?
West Main Street down in North Quinzig, there is a sidewalk, uh, that heads toward the west, toward Worcester?
No, going back up.
Just a little bit.
There was, there was, there's a little bit, it does not go under two ninety bridge on West, on Main Street.
Starts at the two ninety bridge.
Yeah, yeah, it stops right about the two ninety bridge or right, just before.
Yeah. And then it basically picks up at the off-ramp from two ninety.
So you just need us to vote, yes, we'll support the application?
That is correct.
Okay, does anybody have any question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So from a cost standpoint, understanding we can get up to five hundred thousand reimbursements, a two-part question. One, would that cover this?
Mm-hmm.
And two, though, for, this is, as you said, an easy picking. But later, as we identify, say, the number two through twenty of the potential projects, what percentage would this cover? So this is fine, but.
I mean, as each project gets more and more complicated, obviously, it's gonna cost more.
Yeah.
However, we would like to, as we get into the program more, to be able to both do it through a grant, but also if we could offset it with funds that we, the town has. The idea though, is really to just keep picking away at certain locations, on sidewalks, utilizing a series of different types of funding, whether it's a grant or municipal in the future.
If I may, and then the idea, I'd assume to try to interconnect as many of these as possible. Otherwise, we're gonna have bike paths going back and forth on the road, and that's about it.
Correct.
Okay.
The idea is to try to be more, uh, where the, the town is multimodal. Uh, I believe right now, we currently only have one street designated with a true bike lane, and that is Centec Boulevard. And we did that just out of striping. Oh, in, uh, Main Street, Main Street does.
The new section of Main Street, yep. Yeah, through Old Mill intersection.
That's good going downhill, but it's a killer going up.
At least it's not like London where they have the bike, bike, bike lane right in the middle of the road.
Um, actually, the Old Mill intersection is that way.
Yeah, that's fantastic, for public safety. All right, thank you.
Yeah, from a cost perspective, yeah, we could, I mean, I think a rough estimate is three hundred fifty thousand.
Complete streets, you have to have the bike lane? Is, are the, does part of the project have to have a bike lane?
Yes.
So we're limited where we can go, but anyways, then.
That's correct.
But if we can get sidewalks out of it like this, that's good.
And then the other thing we're gonna do is, you know, C M R P C just recently completed their sidewalk study for us, so now we can kind of pair that with, okay, Complete Streets projects and try and, you know, pit on.
Okay, so, um, what do you need for us to, to vote to sign the application? To what the applica- what, what are we do, what are we doing exactly?
In the binder, in the motion.
I have a, I have a motion.
Yep. Oh, you got the motion?
I do.
Okay. Okay.
I'm motion, I make a motion to send a letter of support for the Complete Streets application for North Quinn-Sigumand Ave. And authorize the town manager to sign the application on the board's behalf.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? If there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, next order of business is to review and act on the proclamation request from Dr. Nadine Tracy Crowe for Dorothy Alberta Hertz Seneca for 100 birthday, which is on April 1st, 2023. Do we have proclamation ready?
Yeah, there's a draft in there.
There's a draft in there.
I have it, I have the draft. I have the draft.
Yep.
Looks good.
So we vote to.
Move approval.
Move approval. Okay, so we have motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we can get that over to Dr. Crowe. Okay. Item 14 is to review and discuss the draft policy regarding acquisition of open space. We don't have any changes from last meeting, right?
Just one simple change that we added, the strategic plan into the reference document section. That's the only comment from the last meeting.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
The only cleanup was this reference to Board of Selectment and Select Board, I think, a couple spots to.
Oh, yes, we will definitely take care of that.
Thanks. So where did you have that? I don't think I have it in this copy.
It is not in that copy.
What would it be?
I can tell you in just one second.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, statements?
Within section five, resources, policies implemented shall at minimum be informed by the following, and then I added as number one, the strategic plan.
Anything else on this?
Uh, no, I, we're not, we're not voting on this tonight, correct?
I don't think so, probably.
It says discuss.
Yeah.
I know that the manager asked for comments and I just, I haven't had an opportunity to provide them. I did have a few, so I'll plan to get with you on that.
Yeah, sure, that's great. Okay, we'll just carry it forward to next meeting? Okay. Okay. Okay, then we're down to correspondence, correct? Item 15 is an email dated February 15th from Cynthia Christie, 5 Melvin Ave, opposed to the Veal Project. Item 16 is an email dated February 15th from Ouija Nasser, 3 Miriam Ave, regarding hindrance of enjoyment of property that relates to her abutting to proposed addition to the cemetery. Item 17 is an email dated February 17th from Lauren E. Ham, DC, 5 Tamarie Drive, in support of the Veal Project. Item 18 is an email dated February 23rd from Kevin Kreznecki, Transportation Project Manager, CMR PC. Regarding a public meeting notice, and I couldn't open that and I, no, I don't, I'll try to find that. When the date of that here was? Is, whoops, that's not it. It's going to be here. Let's see.
Do you want the date?
Yeah, what's the date of that?
So it's Monday, March 6th at 5:00 PM. It's a, it's for the tip highway amendment number four.
Yep, at, where is it?
Done Zoom. Yeah, I think it's virtual.
A virtual?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what time?
Monday, March 6th at 5:00 PM over Zoom.
Okay.
I don't have the link to that.
All right, they can, they can go on the CMR PC site and they can get, they can get the link for that. It's for the amendment for the tip?
Amendment number four for that, for the tip, yes.
Okay. Anything else coming through the board in open session? If there being none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. We are adjourned, good evening.